Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of August 14th. Road call, please. Everybody be quiet.
Pleasant this evening, as well as Town Council and the Town Administrator.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Pledge allegiance. We got... Hmm? No, I'm not doing Walton. He's grumpy. Dominic.
Yes?
You can do the pledge allegiance.
All right. Pledge allegiance. To the flag. To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Okay. Announcements.
I have one. You want me to do first, or you want...
Do your thing.
Go ahead.
Okay, I have one. Wareham Police Association presents the first annual public safety event Saturday, September 8th, 2018, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Wareham High School track. This event is in a community-building campaign intended to enhance the relationship between neighbors and the law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community under positive circumstances. This is a free community event. However, we are seeking monetary donations from businesses from the town of Wareham. Please make checks payable to the Wareham Police Association and Public Safety. You can send them in to 2515 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571. That's all I have on there.
Peter?
Just a reminder, once again, the second annual Meet Me at the Tremont event is August 25th at the Tremont Nail Factory Freight Building from 5:30 till 8:30. You can get tickets from the Cape Cod Canal Region Chambers website. You can pick them up at the Gallery Consignment Shop on Main Street. I'm walking around with tickets. Director of Planning is walking around with tickets. So you can reach out, get them from any one of those four sources. Once again, the Minkle Boys are doing the catering. We're having Gateway. I keep forgetting the last portion of a Gateway. You remember, Claire? It's a new dessert company in Wareham. They're doing the desserts. Gateway Goodies, I think it is. The band is going to be Daddy-O, which does 50's covers.
50's, 60's.
50's and 60's covers. And this year, there's going to be an actual potter making pottery out there with a wheel and clay and water and all that good stuff. So we look forward to seeing you out there on the 25th for that.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Oh, there is a state primary election coming up on September 4th, for those interested in such things.
We have for Wareham Historical Society has a concert, Ice Cream Social, on Sunday, August 19th, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Grace Morrison, a local musician from Wareham, who's becoming very popular out there, will be the person doing the actual concert itself. Comment that everybody should know by now, the Wareham Gatemen are the 2018 Cape Cod League baseball champions. We made arrangements... This was a team, too, that had three or four key players had to leave at the beginning of the season almost and go to the USA Baseball Team. Everybody didn't expect much, and these kids really were amazing what they ended up doing. I think it's one of the first times that anybody has done, gone through the East and then the West Finals, et cetera, and without a loss whatsoever, which is even that much more enjoyable. And one of the Wareham, I forget the fellow's name, I'm sorry, got the Most Valuable Player Award as well. And we made arrangements for the Fire Department and the Police Department to give him an escorted ride back to Coolcon, where they had a bootplate special celebration. So those of you who think Coolcon's food isn't that good, I guess it really is.
Okay. Citizens' participation.
Yeah. Citizens' comments. Before we start this, I put a little note on the agenda here. Over the years, we've vacillated back and forth how we do this. It doesn't work the way it's right now because we get asked questions or people will basically give us concerns they have. It involves most of the time, really, day-to-day operations, and I really can't sit there and put the Town Administrator on a spot to answer something when he has to talk to his department heads, and his department heads have to talk to the employees in order to get an answer because any time someone has a complaint, over the years, I've found there's more than one answer to what's going on. And sometimes the complaint itself is not the real problem. There's something else underlying. So to avoid putting out wrong information, not correct information, we're going to go back to what the Selectmen's policy was all along with this. And as long as I'm here till April of this next year, we're going to basically have, well, happy if anybody come up, they can express their opinions, put it on the book, we'll get back to them, which I've always done when I did it before, and we'll respond that way there. That way, there's no misinformation, and I think it'll be a lot cleaner and easier for everybody. Thank you. With that said...
I don't see anybody. Do you see anybody?
No, there's two. We're not getting where that easy.
Come on down. Just state your name, if you would, please.
How you doing? My name's Dennis McCarthy. McCarthy Properties. Me and my family own about a dozen buildings in the industrial parks. I'm coming to the Selectmen today to ask you guys to look at the conditions of the industrial parks, the roadways. Especially Patterson Brook Road, it's getting very overgrown. I know Little Brook Road that comes off of that. The bridge is virtually a one-lane road now. It's so overgrown. In past, I have spoken to the municipal maintenance, and I've just gotten nowhere. The road is not swept. The sides are not cut or cleared.
Private ways.
The sign-up, the front of the road hasn't been touched in 20 years, and it's getting difficult to attract quality tenants when the first thing they see is an overgrown Patterson Brook Road. And I know my family pays hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in taxes, and we really aren't seeing much of a return at all for that money.
Okay. Gary, if you could, the books there, there's a pen there. Just put down there that your concerns about Patterson Brook Road being maintained. I don't know if the road is private or public, but I'm not going to get into that at all. And we'll get back. I'll get you an answer. Give me an email address.
This should be forwarded off to the Redevelopment Authority.
Well, it can go there.
Because the involvement with the industrial parks would lie more with them than the Board of Selectmen, I would think, at this point.
I'm going to forward it to Derek and the Redevelopment Authority and let them handle it.
Yep.
Expect an answer within a week, Gary.
Thank you.
If not, you can come back and yell at me. Say what you'd add to it, please.
I will.
Not yet, Mrs. Slaven.
She can start.
All right. Walton's coming up, too?
Looks that way.
Boy, this is a double.
Each first night back, and already he's coming up.
But he lost his passport. I'm not sure he's allowed.
Good evening, Sandy Slaven. Yes, I see your Garfield Band-Aid. Of all the ones in the drawer, you choose Garfield. I appreciate that.
Right thing to do.
Oh, there's a lot of hearings going along on Woodland Cove, and I just want to, Woodland Cove, the 40B project off of Red Brook Road, just to confirm that because they've already started all their processing, that their affordable housing will be in the Boston housing grid. I believe that is the spot because that's the way they were when they took out their papers.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I'm here for another reason. I want to give a major thank you to the Municipal Maintenance Department. They went down there and removed all the wooden play structures in Shangri-La. All those dangerous play pieces of equipment have been removed, and the area looks great. They also installed a gate to try to prevent people from going down and playing in their cars after dark. So thank you to Mr. Menard and his team for cleaning that out. I want the public to know that the Oakdale Playground has just had their basketball court striped. The bleachers have arrived, and they will be installed shortly. And except for a solar light, that will complete the Oakdale Playground project. And the Lukey Playground just had its basketball court resurfaced finally, so we're close to striping that, and they have a few more things to clean up. But Lukey is virtually, the play area is done. The things to be completed are some of the parking areas and the walking trail. But again, a very good project, worked as a team, and I thank the town for supporting those two projects. And I have nothing else to say.
Thank you. Mr. Walton.
Somebody being a pig. No, somebody being a pig or sloppy.
Silence. 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 End of message.
Hello, everybody. Dave Walton.
Welcome back.
District Five. I want to make a couple of things that should have probably been announced that people may enjoy knowing is the repair work on the Bourne Bridge is not going to be until next spring instead of this fall, which is interesting to know for people who like to go over to that bridge and after what happened to the Sagamore Bridge in the same year, they changed it. So everybody is pleased about that for people who like to use that Bourne Bridge. It'll be shut down sometime in the spring, where hopefully it has the least amount of use. It never stops being used. Another comment, the gentleman who was the MVP might be watching. The name is Stenton?
Something like that.
Shenton or Stenton? But from day one, he has been a really superb ballplayer, and he's a junior in college. He's got another year of college eligibility, but he may be a pro player. Reason I'm here, you know how I feel about signs. Individually, I don't know who, but we know the bike people decided to go through our town again two weeks ago now, two and a half weeks ago. And that means that for about a month now, there have been arrows stuck on every illegal place in town. Poles, street signs, even railroad pieces of equipment. And they look like the Dickens. And I just, I don't expect any answer because we know that you don't know, but I wish someone would find out whoever put them up, take the doggone things down. They're everywhere, and I don't like it when the winter comes along, they start deteriorating, they rot, they make every damn pole. All you gotta do is go, if you want to know what all the poles will end up looking like is, look at the telephone pole in front of the Toby House. Every sign in the world has been put on this same pole, and it just slowly falls apart, and it looks like the Dickens. So I think they should be, if they're going to put them all illegally, then someone should take the doggone things down. And the other thing is, if we're going to change the rules, those two signs at the intersection of Depot and 28 tied to two, one was a state sign, one's a town sign, if you want to get technical, if one is really showing one direction on Route 28, I suppose that's a state sign, if you want. I don't know who's responsible for it. But those two signs up there, Wigwam and Free Music, they're pitiful. They're very, very unprofessional, and they look like the Dickens strung onto our signs. End of story. Thank you very much. Nice to see you again.
Notes on there.
Do it afterwards. Thank you.
We have no appointments.
No, we have board comments. Anything going on? You have any comments outside the norm?
Uh, no. No, no comments tonight. Thank you. Go ahead.
I have one. The Parker Mills Dam, which is actually the dam at Tremont Nail, of course, has been the subject of quite a bit of discussion lately. I just want to point out that notwithstanding that the state has categorized this thing as a, quote, "high-hazard dam," there's no, it's not an imminent danger of collapse. So when we've got people, you know, sending us emails, you know, how can you possibly have events out there with a dam that's so dangerous that you've got to go to court to fix it? It's been in this condition for decades. It would sit in this condition for decades longer. The issue with the dam further deteriorating was substantially stopped once they stopped vehicle traffic from going over it. The dam's not going anywhere. You know, if we got Houston hurricane-type rain of 40 inches, we might have a problem. We don't live in Houston. We're not going to get 40 inches of rain. The dam's not going to collapse and sweep everybody at the Meet Me in the Tremont out to the middle of the canal, so you can stop worrying about that.
Today, at the onset gazebo, we have the EPA/DEP, Representative Keating, Federal Representative, and a few other people from different government organizations. The South Coast of Mass basically received about 75% of a $240,000 grant for beaches, for monitoring the beach water quality, et cetera. This is an important piece simply because anyone that's looking at the news lately, if you look at the West Coast of Florida, it looks like red tide from one end to the other, which is killing all kinds of animals. People can't go in swimming, everything else. It's a, not only a safety issue, it's also a huge economic loss going on right now. So we will be getting a good little portion of that money as well. So I thought that was quite nice to see happen. We didn't expect it. And we did, I think, a week and a half ago with the Wareham Fire and Water District also got another EPA grant, et cetera, to help with the actual costs of the water pollution, but actually the water purification system that they're building. So there's another piece there which is helping. All these things allow us not to have to spend our own money for some of the stuff, which we can then put back through the general fund into trying to maintain as much of our services as we have. And as everybody understands, it's very difficult to maintain. Level funding doesn't allow you to maintain, which is not the way to live. And that's all I have for right now on that. Go ahead, Pat.
All right. So next is, you want to do the second-hand license first?
We're going to, if you want...
Do the pawn license.
Well, let me take care and make it easy. On the second-hand license, due to only three of us being here, we're going to postpone it till next week on the 28th.
I don't think you have to.
I've already been asked to do that.
Oh, okay. By somebody else?
By the proponent.
All right, okay.
And this, I think we have to open up the hearing, just open it again, and then close it.
Move to recontinue.
Move to recontinue the hearing.
Second.
Okay. Patrick?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Alan, yes.
Mr. Chair, I just, I got, it was a proponent asked for it.
That's correct. Proponent asked because there was only three members here, which is his right to ask for it because he preferred to have all five members present.
Okay.
Which is...
Yeah, I saw that on the...
Yeah. No more courtesy. Okay. We'll be rescheduling for the 28th. Dominic?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. Next...
Town business.
Well-meaning articles, town meaning articles.
I can lead off a little bit here. The Redevelopment Authority likely is going to be, well, actually, the Town Administrator's going to be looking for an article from Community Preservation for the environmental cleanup at Tremont Nail. I just want to explain to everybody that this is not something that's optional. We've received a letter that is known as a notice of responsibility from the state. It requires the town to clean up the property. We've got an estimate from the licensed site professional, who is the person in charge of the cleanup. They're a state licensed person. You have to have a licensed site professional manage your cleanup. I can't do it. He can't do it. He can't do it. You've got to have the person properly licensed by the state to supervise the cleanup. The estimate is not cheap. It's cheaper than we might have thought it would have been, but it's not a matter of this is a discretionary thing upon which to spend money. State is going to mandate this. The DEP actually has the legal authority, if you don't clean up a site, to come in, grab their own contractor without going through a bid process, clean the site up, and then stick you with the bill. So your $1.3 million cleanup can turn into your $2.3 million cleanup, because guess who doesn't care how much it costs? That's right, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And when you've proven yourselves to be a scofflaw by not cleaning it up, they really don't care how much it costs. It's a rare occurrence, but it can happen. It's not something that we can pay for out of our annual budget. It's too much money. It's not something that we want to tie up regular borrowing with. We've got too many other needs. And so really, the only way to go about this, and I think justifiably so, is to go through the Community Preservation process. Right now, the Community Preservation Committee, I happen to know, is waiting for Town Council to formally deliver an opinion that this isn't allowed use. He and I have gone over it in detail. There are many municipalities that have used Community Preservation money for environmental cleanup, but they properly want a memo from him stating that, so that their butts are covered, and I understand that. Once that happens, we're hopeful that they will request a law and article and go forward with that. The other article relating to Tremont Nail is the Tremont Nail Overlay District. There was a public hearing held on that last night where it was presented. Of course, the proposed marijuana use is the one that grabs all the attention, but we've also received interest from a potter who wants to set up a pottery co-op. And interestingly enough, under the Wareham Village One zoning, she couldn't do that. You can't have artist studios. We've received interest from a distiller who might like to go there, possibly. They can't go there under the Village One zoning. So what is going to be sought is an overlay district. An article is, you know, at this point, we're seeking to gather more information, but I want to make clear that the request for the article will come from the Redevelopment Authority to the Board of Selectmen. So it's not coming from this body. It'll be coming from the Redevelopment Authority. And that's what I have on those two.
Okay. Just to be clear, Peter, I was at the meeting last night, and the actual overlay at this point here is strictly the Tremont Nail facility?
Yes, it's just for that one parcel. Initially, the original concept for the article included pretty much everything along Elm Street. At a previous Redevelopment Authority meeting, you know, we discussed that and said, wait a minute, you know, we've got all these other property owners, and they really haven't been consulted. If they want in, they can always contact the Redevelopment Authority or the Town Planner and say, hey, we want in on this. But as of yet, nobody's actually done that. And so going forward, the thought is that it will just be restricted to the Tremont Nail property unless somebody else wants to opt in.
Thank you. Okay. We had a couple of the issues that were talked about, having, setting up possibly a solar committee, you know, set up through town meeting, I believe, is what you said?
We did, but you know, one of the interesting things is, we had the zoning rewrite committee. They met, and Madam Moderator can confirm this, they met, what was it, until last year? They came up with fixes to the zoning by law, and by that, they cleaned it up. They took out inconsistent terms. They filled out the use table so that you could actually read the thing and see a Y or an N as to whether you can or can't do something. So they cleaned it up. Interestingly enough, when they were formed, they weren't created with a sunset date in mind. So, you know, I guess the question for the board is, should we ask the Town Planner to simply get that committee going again to study the solar issue, or do we want to create a special solar bylaw committee?
I think what might be easiest is if that committee still actually is technically in existence.
Yeah, makes sense.
And if it is, then we just go forward. I went ahead and I read the solar bylaw after it was discussed last week, and I actually had a copy sent to every one of the selectmen. This was done by Mr. Buckland Beck, I think it was passed in the fall 2017 town meeting. It really covers mostly what I call large photic systems, which means large, you know...
Bigger rays.
Solar systems. It basically, on the small ones, just says they're all allowable on rooftops. Marion actually has a really extensive, what they call a small photic bylaw, which is really put together quite well. Actually, I was involved a little bit with it, so that's why I know the background of it, and we probably should look at that. The only things that I find going through this, and it was really obvious last night at the Planning Board meeting, is that the bylaws, when people write these things, no insult to Mr. Titlebaum, who's a lawyer, but they're kind of put together with lawyer verbiage a lot of times, which is like a lot of gray, like the word "may," "could," et cetera, rather than "shall." And what happens is, in this case of the Planning Board, they have a one and a half megawatt project that was brought before almost Oral Island Road. There's three or four residents that have quite a bit of issues with it, but at the end of the day, you have a zoning bylaw that's written that kind of conforms to what's necessary, but because of this, some of this language, which isn't, you know, basically black and white, the Planning Board, different members could have different opinions, which could basically, I'm going to use the word lockjaw, but basically, it ties the board up for making a decision because they come at it from different ways and can't come up with a final answer. So I would like to see Mr. Buckland and Town Council, whatever, kind of go through the major zoning one and give it to the committee that's doing it, but take a look closely at the language. We need to remove these things that make it impossible to function, and saying "may" or "could" is a recipe for non-function.
Well, you know that lawyers have to have something like that. Otherwise, why would you hire one?
Well, it would be nice if they do it the right way. Now, the other piece that Patrick's been complaining to me about for a year and a half is the sign bylaw.
Now, there's nobody here with good looks.
Yes, yes.
That's a lost cause already. On the sign bylaw, I went through it. As everybody knows, I was instrumental in getting it done this last time around, which was 2010 or '11. I've got notes I made because I spent some time going through it. So obviously, there's some issues that I have. There's things simply as, even on enforcement. We have in three different spots says that basically no signs are allowed in any utility pole. Well, I wish I had a dollar for every sign on a utility pole every 30 days. Also, I feel bad for any person that's either electric company, telephone company, cable company, that has to climb up one of those utility poles. There are enough nails, staples that are all rusted and everything else, probably to kill anybody at any time trying to get up there. Gloves and no gloves. So there are different things that kind of fit and don't fit right now because things have changed. We have a lot of those, what I call banner signs, which plug into the ground, go up about 10 feet in curve, and they flop all over the place. Some of them are on sidewalks, and we have a very simple bylaw that says you can't obstruct anything, any passage on a sidewalk with a sign. If you have a brand-new business or are doing something special, we have a 30-day window you can put some of these temporary signs up, like sandwich boards. But again, we need to clean this up and make it locked in and actually enforce what we're supposed to do. But right now, it's extremely inconsistent what we do.
Even the signs we let the groups put up, Alan, we need to have uniformity in those signs.
Well, there actually is. That's the worst part of it. It's in the sign bylaw.
But they haven't been, and we need to have uniformity because it really does look like shanty town when you have all these different signs out there.
It's inconsistent.
I think the word is podunk.
That was Mr. Holmes's word. We used to use that all the time. Podunk.
No, it's a beautiful town. Let's keep it that way.
You know, and people think that we're picking on you because of yard sales, this and that. You go into many places, you just can't, you don't see any of that up there. You can't just stick a yard sale wherever you want. And the other piece that, which we put in there when I put this together to make life easy for the code enforcement officer, which is somewhere coming down the line, is that we're supposed to have a, basically, a special services seal on every sign that's out there. If there's no seal on the sign, it means it's not approved, and therefore, they should pull it. It's not a big deal, but basically, that's one way to know whether it should be there or not. But the problem is, it's a lot of work, and we don't have the bodies right now.
All right. So I got one, if I can add one.
And I got one more for you. And then in short term.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
The last piece is, we've been completing, Patrick in particular, has been complaining about why we're locked into the Boston area. How did we get there? Is it had to do with the gerrymandering of districts by the, at the federal level, et cetera? I've asked Mr. Buckland if he would spend some time, if he could, through Derek as well, to see who was responsible for getting us where we are. And what I'm going to do is ask Patrick to follow up with Ken to see what we have...
Absolutely.
Because we can't go and change anything until we know how it happened, and we have to make sure if we do start to play around with that, what the positive and negative effects might be.
Absolutely.
All yours.
All right. So the other thing is, I want to try to save some lives. All right, so the other thing is, I want to try to save some lives. There's a program in some towns now, and I'd like to see us implement it in this town, where house numbers, that go on houses, which are one of our, which is a problem, by the way, for everybody. As you remember, the moderator's husband came in here and spoke proudly about the numbering being a problem. Well, there's a program, and I'd like council to look into this, and a lot of towns now, they're doing this. They make, they sell to the owners the numbers. And they're all uniformed. And you have to post them all the same, okay? And everybody gets them, and they post them all the same. So every house has to have them, and they're all the same, and it's part of the bylaw that makes it mandatory, and you have to get them from them. So every time somebody goes to sell a house or whatever, those numbers have to be there. They're going to have 10 other ones, but they gotta have this particular one. And they're easily visible at night and everything else. And if you check into that, Rich, if you'd kind of Google that up, you'll see what I'm talking about. And one of the firemen actually brought it up to my attention, that was Chris Smith. And so I want Chris to get credit for that. And he suggested that we look into it and that we try to implement it. So I'm bringing that forward today.
Phone.
Microphone.
It's okay.
Microphone?
Straight up.
There we go.
I was going to ask Selectman Troppiano, Patrick, is there any way that Chris could perhaps email me over the information he has? I'd be happy to contact him and have him contact you.
Oh, that'd be great.
And I'm sure he has the information.
Love to have it, thanks.
And, because we talked about it as being an issue. It's a serious issue, believe it or not. And, you know, seconds mean lives, they just do. Whether it's a fire, whether it's somebody having a heart attack, or somebody caught underneath a car, or whatever it is, seconds mean lives. And any confusion at all can mean somebody who doesn't make it from somebody who does. And if it takes this to make it happen so that everybody has numbers, then that's what it has to be.
That's a good idea.
Are you sure Mr. Smith wants the credit?
Yes.
Well, I don't know, he probably does. Well, we talked about it, he brought it up, and I agree with him, so I'll take the blame if he doesn't want it, credit. But he deserves the credit because he is thinking seriously of people, and he's one of the inspectors, if he isn't the inspector now, down at the department. So he's serious, and I think, you know, between that and the moderator's husband, who's been around here for gazillion years, and he's fought it time and time again, I think we should listen to them.
Yep, agreed. Anything else?
No, that's it, for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
And for the other articles, do you have any that you want to bring forward?
I don't know, did I?
No, well, that's the, we'll put the annual, if you allow it, capital planning, approve and fund article, for the fall capital plan. And then we need the transfer to Wareham Community TV from the receipts reserve for appropriation account.
Yep. Are we going to need to have any placeholders where we don't have full information yet?
Yeah, there might be, might be one with civil service and such.
Okay.
Reserve for appropriation account.
Can you let the moderator know as soon as possible so she knows what it is and understands? I'm just going to put you in trouble, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Remember, we promised this time we wouldn't load her up with placeholders.
You promised.
You promised. I said no such thing.
I promised.
Where's the board's vote on that?
Yeah.
I guess it's 1-4-0, probably. I tried, Claire.
You have a discussion and vote of articles, but we're not really ready.
We don't have anything, we can't do anything.
All right, so the next after that will be assigned.
Just remind everybody, September 6th is the deadline, that we, that following Tuesday, we have to, it's our last chance, and if the board doesn't vote to put on the warrant, it's not going on.
So warrant articles, September 6th is your deadline, everybody. Just so you know, I'm going to remind you, December, September 6th is the deadline.
Yeah.
All right, next up is onset four, Four Squares Church, 301 onset Ave, P.O. Box 107, onset mass. They are looking for an event at the Banshell. Worship service at the Banshell on 9/2/18 at 10:00 a.m., and the rain date would be 9/9/18.
I think they're looking for signs, aren't they?
And they're also looking for signs, yeah.
Just a sign permit.
Yeah, they're also looking for a sign permit.
Yeah, the Banshell, I think Derek has.
Did they list where the signs would go?
And it doesn't says the signs, let's see, two on onset Ave at the bottom of the Banshell Hill, and one on Union across from Ms. Dean's salon.
Okay, that's what.
Those should be fine.
That's fine. Just no issues there. Motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
Okay.
Donations?
Donation. Next up is Robert Child's Charitable Foundation, Three Village Green, Plymouth, Massachusetts. On behalf of the Town of Wareham, we are pleased to accept, we'd like to accept the grant of $1,000 to the Wareham Free Library.
Motion.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
Okay, good. Next up, what do you get there?
Uh, let's see.
Do you have the business? We do have some other business.
We do have one, right?
Hold on, yeah.
We have one item that came up out of the blue, actually, this afternoon late, has to do with the clerk.
All right, Peter, you can read this into the record, please?
Yep.
Explain what it is. And the reason we're doing this under 48-hour, if we're not meeting next week, and the problem is that if we had to wait till the 28th, it would not be enough time to publish it to the newspapers.
Right. What this is, is the election warrant for the November election, and this has to be done, you know, X amount of days out ahead of the election. So anyway, I'll read this in, and that will be my motion. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth, Plymouth Shire Town, to the constables of the Town of Wareham, greetings in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town of Wareham who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at precinct one, Wareham Town Hall, 54 Marion Road, precinct two, Ethel Hammond School, 13 Highland Ave, precinct three, Minor Forest School, 63 Minor Ave, precinct four, Deacon School, 760 Main Street, precinct five, Deacon School, 760 Main Street, precinct six, Minor Forest School, 63 Minor Ave. On Tuesday, the fourth day of September 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the following purpose, to cast their votes in the state primaries for the candidates of political parties for the following office. Senator in Congress for the Commonwealth, Governor for the Commonwealth, Lieutenant Governor for the Commonwealth, Attorney General for the Commonwealth, Secretary of State for the Commonwealth, Treasurer and Receiver General for the Commonwealth, Auditor for the Commonwealth, Representative in Congress, Ninth District, Counselor, First District, Senator in General Court, First Plymouth and Bristol District, Representative in General Court, Second Plymouth District, District Attorney, Plymouth District, Clerk of Courts, Plymouth County, Register of Deeds, Plymouth District, County Commissioner, Plymouth County. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting, given under our hands this 14th day of August 2018. Alan H. Slaven, Chairman, Patrick G. Troppiano, Clerk, Peter W. Titlebaum, Anthony R. Scasiotti, Jr., Mary Bruce, Selectman of the Town of Wareham.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Patrick. Any questions on the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0. Thank you.
So we actually have to do this to make the primary election illegal.
Yep.
Next up will be the Town Administrator's Report.
I enjoyed a nice vacation with my family.
That was good.
What'd he say, nothing?
Enjoyed a nice vacation with my family.
Oh, there we go.
You were with your children.
I still enjoyed it.
All right, so liaison, liaison report.
More importantly, did they?
Actually, they.
Not as much.
All three survived, which is even better.
Liaison reports.
Peter?
I don't think I really have anything.
No, I got nothing tonight.
All right, well, as I said, I did the planning board because Tony wasn't going to make it last night, because I wanted to have some idea of potential articles coming forward, so I wanted to have some background. And I'm not going to go back into it again. I did go to the ZBA meeting last week on Wednesday. Another enjoyable time, listening to the proponent's lawyer, who I hate watching someone smile at me as he's telling me, we're not doing anything. But again, he's doing the job he's paid for, which is kind of discouraging, though. The comments were, that's nice, but we don't have to do it. Oh, yeah, but that doesn't fall under the rules, and yeah, okay, but no. And it was right down the line, I think they gave him a list of about 30 items that Mr. Buckland had put together, and I would say, out of the 30, 25 were crossed out.
I saw that.
So I'm confused, so the developer is saying that people of low to moderate income don't deserve to have the amenities?
Basically.
Basically.
Yes.
So that's what we have on the record. They're saying that all they're going to do is basically put people in a box on a desert island and not provide them the amenities. And that's good living for people.
That's what we are ending up with, with the 40B rules and regulations. Again, you know, I'll go on record, I'm not happy with Chapper, I'm not happy with DHCD, I just think that they are not functioning in the real world. And there's a meeting, I believe, September 25th with Jay Ash, who is, you know, basically the Secretary for Housing and Development, et cetera. I will express my opinions, and I usually get thrown off that way, but I will do that again. But it's discouraging, the only thing that I was able to do, I went and kind of looked up and went through some of the records, listened to what was being said. I was told that they had a letter or they had full sign-off from the Water Pollution Control Facility. I think there's something missing there because there were certain things that they said they didn't have to do, and since I have a relative that's on the sewer commission, I asked the question, and I got a blank stare, which made me really nervous. And I asked a few other questions, such as ownership of the property, and I went down to our assessors' office to see who owns the property. And there are certain rules and regulations for a 40B project, you have to have a certain type of ownership. You can put a statement in saying you have a PNS, but if nothing's been processed or done there, I'm not sure whether or not, on the hearing on the 22nd, which I will try to be at at all costs, that whether or not they can actually have a decision by the ZBA, because there are some legal questions right now that I have. I apologize that I haven't spent more time with it, but I just wasn't happy with what I was hearing, so I decided to take some time and look into it.
I said that when the project came up, that, because if you remember right, I don't know if anybody remembers, but they wanted to put a 40B project out at the golf course once upon a time. And the way that, the way we were able to defeat it is, we happened to have the right of first refusal on the property. So we said, no, we're not going to do it, and if we have to, we'll exercise our right. So the project didn't happen because they didn't have control of the property and therefore couldn't file it. And I said that at the very beginning of this. I don't believe that they have the necessary control over the property either, the way that it's set up. I know, I know what they have.
They have a PNS, but it's not.
How much is the PNS for?
I didn't look at the PNS itself, I just looked at the actual statement that they had a PNS.
I thought it was over for $5 million for seven.
I think that's correct.
It's 6.83 acres, or 8.3 acres, something like that.
It's eight, it's almost eight acres, yeah.
And public dollars are going to offset something, that's where you're talking close to $1 million an acre on Granbury Highway?
Yeah.
Basically.
I'm just confused by the, it just, I don't see, we haven't seen any sales that could meet up with that.
No, and the other piece of this is that, because I, you know, with Serpent, I'm on the MOP, and the MOP is what the Master Operation Plans, basically, it's the planning for all roads in southeast Mass. It's the organization that does a transportation improvement program. So any road construction project like 628 is voted on and approved by the MOP branch, which is funded by state and federal monies. Now, I've asked the question in the beginning when they came before us here, have you talked to Mass DOT, you know, District Five, which is our area? The answer, oh yeah, we've talked to them all along. Well, this project came to the town in 2017. The project for the 628 highway was laid out and actually finished in 2016, which means Mass DOT never had any idea that that particular project was going to be on that highway, affecting the highway.
Especially with the turnaround.
Yeah, but what bothers me most is, in the meeting a week ago, I asked the question again, and they were, oh yeah, we've been talking to five or six people and whatever. There is, there's a firm that's doing the easements and takings. It's not part of the actual highway construction. So what I did at that meeting is, I asked the chair, because they asked me a question, and I said, if you'd like, I will get ahold of Mass DOT, and I will get the current actual maps of what's happening with the turnarounds and everything else, because we had asked if they could put a controlled signal crosswalk. If you look at the property and you go down the edge, you probably see most of the people there, unfortunately, are going to walk across Red Brook Road over to.
7-Eleven.
Is that a 7-Eleven and a gas station there? And they're not going to go like across the street, cross right across it, they're just going to go straight across. And that's going to be really dangerous, especially kids. They're just going to run across. And the answer was, no, it's town property, whatever, we don't have to do it. That's probably what really got me aggravated about the whole thing. So I decided to look into it, and from what I can see, from what I have, that Mass DOT sent me to give to Mr. Buckland, to give to the ZBA, there's some, there's very little takings there, so there's, we're not getting straight answers, and I'm, you know, I'm not going to go any more detail saying, well, I think what they're telling me and not telling me. But the bottom line is, there's some real issues here, and they need to be resolved.
I noticed, Alan, that they even crossed out the six-year build-out window.
Oh yeah, we're eight years now.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, can you imagine what that place will look like when time eight years rolls around? You know? And the amenities, they don't want to give anybody anything. I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, it's absurd. You know, any other project in the world would have to do that. And, you know, it's not like this, you know, no matter what, they could be overpaying for the property, that's their problem, not ours. You know what I'm saying? But they need to at least supply people with a decent place to live, that they can actually live in, you know what I mean? And, you know, you know what happens when you have nothing for anybody to do? It just causes more problems. And they have literally nothing, they want to put literally nothing. I mean, I looked at the cross-out sheet, and I was shocked at the things they took off. Some of them, you would have said, well, that's a no-brainer, why would you cross that off? And they just crossed everything off. I think they just took the thing and just crossed everything off.
Well, that's my concern. If they're saying it's because of cost, they've clearly overpaid, they're going to get tax credits back. The reason you overpay is so that you can have denser development on there, which brings them more tax credits. So they would rather do that and play the game than give amenities. Look, at the end of the day, when that comes, those folks are our residents, and they're our responsibility.
We end up with them, and the responsibility is ours after they're done.
It is ours.
So if this is coming, we want the best for our residents.
Yeah, the other part of this, too, is that as they build this out, they have the right to sell this at any time, which is one of the things they do. You get the project approved, you sell it to someone else, and then you're allowed a 20% profit. But every time you sell it, that 20% now is a bigger number, that that 20% is based off, is how they make money and stuff. But my concern really is that, in the back of the property, there will be a fence because of a drop-off and stuff, but the wells and everything for the onset, Fire and Water Department are right back in there. You know, and the issue is, you know, you're going to have kids and stuff, there's no real playground for them to play, it's a smaller area, kids are going to go into those woods and stuff, and there's going to be issues there, too. So I'm just disappointed because there's a lack of concern for the people that are going to house, it's like.
And I'll bet you money that if I looked over that performer, I'd find lots of money in there. Because typically, they hide a lot of money in the performer.
Yeah, they do.
And I can probably see it, trust me.
And the other reason for the eight years is, which was brought out, was that they can only get so much money a year from DHCD in tax credits, there's a limit.
Right.
So they can't build it all at once because they won't get enough tax credits for them to be able to actually build a project, because they don't have enough money in place to do it.
Right.
They paid a reasonable cost for the land, they could.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
And you know, the other thing that bothers me, of course, I guess these are going to be rentals, so it may not be the same. But what bothers me is the number of people that have come to us to abandon their, their low-income housing. And, you know, how many of these, what if they sell this project and decided to sell it out? And turn them into affordable houses and sell them? Then what's going to happen when the market isn't right? Are they going to come and ask us to abandon those, too? And it seems like DHCD is two-faced or two-sided on this, because, you know, all of a sudden, we get a thing from them, yeah, yeah, they can get rid of it, but yet, they want us to